Now that our solicitor, I think, has stabilized his seat here. Okay, we'll get started. Mrs. Durkosh, can you please conduct a roll call of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Ms. Greenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman? Mr. Stoloff?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
A present, one absent. Student Board Representatives. Ally Meltzer?
Here.
Michael Lacotta?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance, flag, and the United States of America, public, and one nation, God, all, liberty, and pride.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 14th, 2019 Public Meeting of the Wissickin School District Board of Directors. This is a voting meeting in which we will formally vote on items reviewed at last week's work session. I'd also like to note that prior to this meeting, the board met executive session to discuss legal matters. And with that, I'll move on to Item 2, which is a list of public meetings since our last one. Item 3, which lists upcoming meetings over the next month. And as you can see, it's a pretty busy one. One thing I want to note is that Item 3B, the January 22nd, 2019 Facilities Meeting, is actually at 7:00 PM, not 6:30 as listed on the agenda. And I believe what's posted on the website and notifications that went out have the correct time at 7:00 PM. And also, the location has been changed to the auditorium in anticipation that we may have a larger-than-proud session. The next up is Presentations. And we have an update from the high school.
Hi, everyone. Tonight, giving the student highlight for Wissickin is Senior Nick Gagliano. And just a little bit about Nick. He first came to Wissickin as a freshman from a Catholic school and was immediately welcomed by the school soccer team, who became pretty good friends of his. And at his school, he realized that there's little bullying and that everybody is very friendly with one another, which is something that he mentioned really liking about Wissickin and the community. And in terms of academics, his favorite subject is math. And outside of the classroom, he partakes in NHS, Stars Tutoring Program, and the Ambassador's Club.
While he's definitely seen an increase in the course selection for this coming school year, one of the biggest things he thinks Wissickin can improve on is their course selection in coming school years after he graduates. Outside of Wissickin, he's heavily involved in WRA Soccer. He's a referee on weekends and even coaches his own team. This coming fall, Nick will be attending Sesculhanna University, where he will be studying Applied Mathematics and Engineering. He will be part of the 3-2 Dual Engineering Program between Sesculhanna and Columbia University. Here's Nick.
Great.
Hello, and thank you all for having me. It was basically the luck of a raffle that allowed me to come here tonight. Recently, at Wissickin High School, we have been, well, the juniors, sophomores, and freshmen have been getting their course selection sheets. Recently, we had our Program of Studies Night to inform students of the course selection process for next year. Majority of parents and students present were of those of the, of coming to the high school next year for their freshman year. The focus was on what to expect freshman year and what are we going to be doing different. The octaves for Business Education and Engineering are taking new paths this upcoming year. The business courses are creating pathways where students can take one of four paths over the years to enhance their knowledge in a certain direction. The four paths are Finance, Accounting, Business Management, and Marketing. The paths can overlap so students in certain classes have different knowledge backgrounds based on what path they choose and can donate ideas to one another, providing a team-based classes. Other departments have begun to develop their own pathways, such as our Science Department. Science Department is having freshmen take Biology and then they allow students to dive in several different directions from there as to what they want to learn after their foundation has been built. Students can take Chemistry, Anatomy, Physics, or Environmental Science after freshman year. And from any of those choices, they can branch off into multiple different directions from there. Our Engineering Department is taking a much larger scale of the pathway approach. The department is starting what they call Project Leadaway, where the courses will be taking a computer-integrated and manufacturing direction. The courses will lead to possible aerospace courses in the future and other capstone courses. Outside companies will be able to see students work and provide specialized tasks that they would have a student require if they worked for them themselves. Our new engineering teacher, Mr. Huguenbroe, will be starting a TSA Club, which is Technologies Student Association Club, which is a much more broader and more developed version of the Robotics Club. As for our course selections for next year, the deadline is the same as usual. However, the session held to choose the courses on a computer will no longer be during a history class. This year, I've been informed that during an IE period, there will be an assembly held with all of a certain grade, freshman, sophomore, junior, where they will all be choosing the courses together at the same time. This idea was implemented in hope for earlier finalizations for courses of the following year for all the students. As for the next thing that happened in the past month, we had a bunch of early donations during late November and early December. There were several charity groups during, with all the clubs. NHS and Q Club collectively ran a canned food drive where they received 500 pounds of canned food that they're going towards, that are all going towards the Mattie Dixon Foundation. Q Club ran a donation for UNICEF, where they raised $180. As for our blood drive led by Ms. Jarvis and our Health Couriers Club, we had 99 people come out to donate for blood towards Red Cross. Wissickin also had an annual donation towards the Purple Heart Foundation led by Mr. Mog, where they would be donating clothing. Mr. Mog was able to get all of his classes and clubs to donate 150 bags worth of clothing. And if you were in the classroom at the time, it covered the entire whiteboard. So you'd barely be able to teach with all of these clothing in this room. Our SAD Club also did a donation even for trucks for Formatics, where they raised $849 in money equivalent of toys for kids. At the beginning of January, we had our Silent Night and Pep Rally. This year, this was ran by our Fans Club and Teachers. During the three-day week of the event, we had a Spirit Week. It was sports team-themed between different grades, then USA Day, and then a Whiteout Day on Friday of the event. The money raised for the Pep Rally and game came from money made from earlier sports games within the year. And the Pep Rally was considered one of the best we had due to several different factors. For one, the Philly Fanatic was there from a contact that was able to get him to appear from earlier in the week during the Sports Teams Day. And there was also a DJ that could fix our usual sound system situation that we always seem to have a little bit iffy situation with that. Fans Club was also selling T-shirts earlier for the Whiteout Day, which encouraged a group excitement for the Pep Rally. And during the Pep Rally, all sports teams and clubs were recognized in some way, giving all those who can participate in clubs something to feel proud of. The Silent Night game was costume-themed, and from what I was told compared to the past, it was a significantly large turnout. We did lose the game, however, it was still a great experience due to the Fans Club. Besides our clubs and sports teams receiving recognition, our singing team did something great as well within the past month. 2018 was the 200th anniversary year of the creation of the song Silent Night made by Franz Gruber in 1818. Our own music teacher, Mr. Conahan, had the opportunity to bring the Wissickin Choir Team to the Kimmel Center in Philly to lead a singing group. According to a student within the choir, there were over 1,200 people present in the theater and several other choir groups present from several different locations, local and worldwide, including places such as Japan. Mr. Conahan custom-made a version of the song and has been working on this event for the past two months. As for our FBLA team, the last topic that I'll be covering, had a FBLA Regional Leadership Competition. This competition is a local competition where members participate in performances or tests. The performances were held at North Penn this year, where students created and presented PowerPoint presentations or a speech to judges within their time limit of seven minutes. The tests were taken at Wissickin High School themselves, where students took 100-question solo, group, or large-group tests within an hour time limit. We had 60 students qualify for this competition and 37 students placed in notable places of their category where they can go on to the next stage. Wissickin had 14 students receive first place in several different subject areas of the event. The next stage of the competition is Nationals, which is held during April in Hershey, PA, where all 37 of our students can possibly attend. And as of that, that concludes my presentation. And I wanted to thank you here for having me tonight.
Thank you, Nick. Hey, Nick, a couple comments. Sorry.
You're good.
So you made a comment about the sound system in the high school gym being not the best. You may be happy to know that one of the items that we are approving or voting on tonight is for an upgraded sound system for the high school gym.
That's good.
So that hopefully will be good news for the students that are following you. Second thing is that I made a comment, I think, about course selection or in the introduction, there was a comment about course selection. Did I hear that properly? Explain a little bit more about your thoughts on course selection.
Like the process or?
There was something about improving the course. Was it about improving course selection? What was the idea you had for improving course selection? Because I'm asking because my daughter is going through course selection seriously.
Yeah, so there's, the usual like math, science, history, English, they're not really changing much. It's more of the electives, like the subcourses, like business, technology, that are all changing the way they do things. They're going in sort of like, you follow a certain path to get to a certain direction. Like, for example, the business ones, there's Finance, Accounting, Business Management, and Marketing. So they would all start the students off with like something, Intro to Business Tech. And then they would go off, like if you wanted to do Finance, you would learn Computer Applications and then Managing Your Finance. Or if you wanted to do Accounting, you would go from Intro to Business to Accounting. Like, it would set you off in a certain path. And sometimes the paths, they would have like overlapping courses, like Business Hall would be third on one, but second on another. And you can come from either way, and different students would help each other. Learning this with Science as well and the Engineering Program as well. So students can have different backgrounds and help each other. So that's how I think they're improving, by having others help each other through the process of learning more.
Great. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the first of two public comment periods on our agenda. Let's see, this one is for comments on agenda items only. I don't see any speakers registered, so we'll move on to, next, which is Report of the Board President. I have one informational item to bring forward today, and it's Document A1, which is a list of committee assignments for the year. And there are no changes since we updated those committee assignments back when Paul joined the board in October. And you guys had a copy of it. And you guys have any questions? Take any? None? Aside from that, there are no voting items under 15A. That's it for the Board President Report. Next is Report of the Superintendent. Jim?
Okay, thank you. The one informational item is an update for everybody on the various discussions and actions of the Safe Schools Committee. As you may recall, this is a committee that meets once a month, discuss two different things. One, in a private session, aims, or students by name, which are mental health experts and our law enforcement experts have information on, they share, and it's a very, very positive, productive climate. That I'm not sharing anything with you tonight because that's all confidential. The second half of the meeting is new now, which is to say, those same experts, some of the people would leave, but the law enforcement experts stay, school security experts stay, and we have a monthly conversation about school security. And in this forum tonight, it will be the second update on all of those things, all those discussions that have taken place. So the last update in this forum was August 20th. Since then, this Safe Schools Committee continues to meet one time a month. We have conducted Run, Hide, and Resist drills across the district, incorporating feedback and lessons learned from expert onlookers and observers. For example, we include, or one of their observations was to include the drills during times when students are in common areas. Makes sense. We'll incorporate that. We have asked for and received high school student feedback in IE sessions, both in October and January. I attend those, they're actually quite entertaining for me. And one of the most important takeaways I'd like to add from that is, and I ask this question, how often do high school students think about this topic? And every one of the students there said constantly, all the time. And maybe that's not a surprise to us, but probably a good reminder of where student mindsets are on this and why we need to continue to pay attention to it. And we had open conversations. Our SRO, Beth Sanborn, was there, as was our security coordinator, Jason Bielka. And we'll continue to do that because I think it's a really good forum. You might have heard in the news, this new state tip line, Safe to Say, is actually operational as of today, or at least this month statewide. There's been a lot of rocky, turbulent conversations about its rollout. It's been mandated, it's in legislation, but they didn't really put forth enough resources to do this, frankly, properly. Nonetheless, we had our Team Training, our Safety Assessment and Intervention Team, SAI, which is really more like Brett Assessment Team. We are, have been trained on how to react to and deal with any tips that may come through. Student training on this new statewide system will, is scheduled for February, very short video clip. And in a related way, we have access to this program called Social Sentinel, which is an alert service that shares information that they harvest from public sources, social media sources. And we've been receiving tips from that, quite frankly, many, many false alarms, which is not good. But nonetheless, if of 100 tips, if one turns out useful, and this could be in terms of someone expressing a desire to hurt themselves or others, then it's obviously worth our time. County school security experts are scheduled to conduct security audits at all of our schools in January, this week, actually. We have made improvements to the high school's early morning building access. We limit the number of doors that are open now, and each of them has a monitor present at all times. We have plans for the K-5 Security Vestibule Projects at the three K-5 schools that don't have one now. And they are almost ready for bid. Number of 2019 construction is on schedule. We have ordered Stop the Bleeding kits, and each, they will be co-located with all of our AEDs across the district. We have ordered school volunteer vests, which are bright yellow to help English identify them. These are all, by the way, ideas that come out of the city's interaction with school security experts. We've made some communication enhancements from terms of district to home. We're refining our way to get messaging to improve clarity and response time whenever possible. For example, if a bus delay, we are able now and hopefully quickly get the information to where it needs to be. We are looking at our inter-school abilities. We get one building to the next. But Rola representatives are in the district in February to assess the current system and offer suggestions for enhancements. We've looked at our intra-school, our ability to communicate while you're inside the building. And we fixed all known areas of all schools where the PA system was either a little achy or non-existent. And we've paid attention to our handheld units for when you take kids outside the building. We have more what's called Class Buttons on the way, which are really more like essentially a top priority. I'll call to any law enforcement in the area, schools have these. And we have, we'll double how many we have in April or maybe shortly thereafter. And lastly, we have assured that we have digital pictures of all students and staff in our system in case a quick identification. As you can see, we are very busy on this.
Thanks, Jim. Questions? I have a question, not for Jim, but actually for Ally and Michael. You know, over the past year or so, I think that school safety has been a topic that's come up a lot and a lot of talk and activities around how we can strengthen school safety. With all the activity and all the stuff that Jim talked about regarding school safety, has that made you feel safer? Or all the talk, you know, less safe, curious?
I think after, I think the large school shooting last year and like the walkouts that we had last year, that was very unsettling. I kind of started thinking about like, coming to school every day. Like, I just had those thoughts every once in a while, like a fire alarm when someone's down. But like now, knowing that there's people outside of the building, constantly thinking about school safety, kind of like, it's more settling. Makes you feel more in school. Knowing that we're like implementing new like Run, Hide, Resist drills rather than just hiding, more like reactive or like proactive drill rather than just hiding in the classrooms, armed in the building. I think that's, definitely makes me feel more comfortable. I'm being in school, just knowing that there's all these like, I've had with Mr. Bielka, talk about these kind of things and like knowing that like they're working on them like every day, day in, day out. That definitely makes me feel comfortable.
Yeah, and beyond that, I agree that all the new talk of drills and other emphasis on safety has made me feel more comfortable. Something specifically that we haven't really touched on are the new apps, Take Attendance. System is so much more effective than using any walkie-talkies or whatever we used in the past. And building off of what was mentioned about students kind of having more open conversations about school safety and everything. I work for the school newspaper, and what we're doing with the February edition is we're thematically like incorporating school into it by talking about paying tribute to the Parkland victims and also emphasizing school and the role that that has now. And something we've noticed as part of like the editorial staff is that students are way more interested in writing articles about this. It's something that is really impacting the school level. And I think that the conversations started about it has kind of definitely helped us feel safer and also just more open.
Great.
Can I ask a question too? How do you guys feel? Is everybody getting acclimated to the new morning entrancing into the building? Do you think that's running smoothly now? That it's been going on for a little while now?
I think both of us only come in the dorm entrance, but I do like, I noticed that there's a security guard there every morning. Like, you can't like come in, or you can't come in after the bell and he waits there. I work the school store in the morning, which is like right there. And I see him like honor to that like at least 10, 15 minutes after the bell rings, make sure any student coming in has an ID. Like, I definitely noticed his presence and like him accounting, staying there later than he has to and being there every single morning when I walk in. And the other entrance that I'll come in is like the garage entrance. I also noticed that like the guard usually is positioned there. Yeah, definitely makes the morning feel more secure because before that, I know like a lot of doors were kind of just open. You kind of just can win wherever. That's definitely most comfortable because any one, not a student or a teacher, could just walk in the building. But yeah, definitely.
I had one other question for you guys. Have you had any drills where some of the student body at least is at lunch here?
I'm not sure if we've done that this year specifically, but I remember in the past, we've done it during class where students have been walking hallways or in the knuckles between classes. And we've done drills like that, fire drills, not any Run, Hide, Resist drills where instead of just meeting with the class you're with, you'll go out and meet your homeroom. And I think that's super important to emphasize and to show that it's not always going to happen when we are necessarily planned or prepared.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Jim, review the voting items?
Okay, on 15B, just two items are the same as we reviewed on Monday.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to ask if we could pull out the first B1, that first calendar. Vote on that separately when?
Sure. Yeah, and if you guys recall, last week, when we talked about the school calendars, there was some discussion about the calendar for 2019, 2020. Right now is, has school starting before Labor Day? And Labor Day this September is December 2nd, right? So Tracy had brought up the idea of having school start after Labor Day, which would be September 3rd. Because that's something that we've been talking about over the past year or so, about varying when school started or after Labor Day, depending on how early Labor Day was in the year. If it was very early, we should consider starting after Labor Day. If it's late or later, obviously start before Labor, right? So Tracy, you had asked the question of whether or not have a call for a motion to amend calendar for 2019, 2020 to reflect start date of the school year after. So we'll pull that out separate, go through the process. How many people on the board, to what extent, there's support for that? With that, we'll move on to the Report of the Assistant Superintendent, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. This evening, I have two items to share. First of all, on Friday this week, our students will have the day off. They get a nice three-day weekend, actually a four-day weekend. But our teachers will return to the classrooms for their own learning. And just to give you a flavor of some of the kind of things that will happen in the morning that day, we will have our high school core teachers working with their new Lincoln system and specifically how it relates to midterm administration and scoring. We're going to have curriculum review work occurring. We have some teachers working on performance-based assessments as an enhancement to our current assessment program. Our health and phys ed teachers will be looking at vaping and e-cigarettes and the trend in this direction and from a health standpoint and perspective. And we even have a team going, our art, secondary art teachers going to the University of Arts for a visitation of Day of Learning in the art museum. So some nice things happening in the morning. The afternoon, our principals have prepared specifically school-based professional development that relates to their school community and is supportive of school goals that are being worked on at the school level. So that's Friday, and we appreciate these days through the year to introduce new learning and also to build on learning that we're doing over a long term. The second thing is related to the School Counseling Plan, Chapter 339 document that you'll be asked to approve this evening. There's just one minor adjustment I wanted to share, a revision from last week's document that you had. Page four, the last document you had was reflective of the previous mission statement and shared values of the district. And since our approval of the comprehensive plan back in the fall, that has a revised mission and vision and shared value section, and that is now reflected in the document you're approving. We just wanted to make sure it was updated with the latest information. So that's it.
Thanks, Gary. Report of the Solicitor. Jeff, I know there's a new item that we didn't see last week.
Yes. On Item 15C1, I'm going to be looking for approval of a settlement agreement between Family A and student ID number 790512 and the district, binding the district with respect to the settlement regarding the student's entitlement to participate in the district's programming as presented per Document C1.
Okay. You? Report of the Board Secretary, Wade.
Thank you. The one change is noted in Item 5 is a name change that we talked about, and other than that, they're the same. And we're requesting meeting minute approvals.
Okay, thanks. And Report of the Board Treasurer.
Thank you, we're requesting the same items as last time.
Thanks. Moving on to Board Committee Reports. First up is Communications. Ronnie, anything to add? Oh, Ronnie's not here. All right. Okay. I guess there's nothing to add. Um, Curriculum and Technology, Ron is a, anything new since last week? I think actually Gary, the thing you referred to is a
Yes, there are no changes.
Other than that, right, okay. And then we're moving on to Facilities and Transportation, Tracy.
Have a informational uh informational items tonight. We're gonna have a presentation on the K five building capacity and meeting date. Over to you.
Okay. As noted, we, well, let me get this page up, and there should be copies. This is gonna be uh kind of hard to see from the screen. Is that better? Okay. Okay, so there are copies of these pages uh for the audience, and we will post them on the website for sure. There's a lot of numbers that we need to present tonight, so it was hard to to make things any bigger without uh having fifty slides. So I know everybody would be really interested in, but we're not gonna do that. Tonight, uh, the intent of tonight is to provide an update on what was originally presented back in in November in the Facilities Committee, which was a look at the capacity of our four elementary schools. And and that evening, we had the original first look, as it was called, first cut draft, um, calculating capacities. That's up there in the first column. Right here. We uh have since relooked at things and came up with two other ways of looking at capacity.
Jim?
Yes.
You, can you increase the size of that?
Uh.
We have hard copies in front of us, but I don't know that the audience does. Yeah, lower right-hand corner, I think there's like
Just go a little more.
Yeah, there's like a plus sign there.
How's that? Better? More?
Little better. Still small.
Getting there. We're just, we're just going, I mean, it's gonna show less of the page, but that's just fine.
All right.
Better?
Better.
All right.
Okay.
We're gonna make everyone happy before the night's over. How's that? All right.
Yeah. All right.
I don't even have glasses anymore. All right, so as I was saying, we have since November come up with two different ways, other ways of looking at capacity. And we're gonna call them uh quote compromise current unquote, and I'll explain that in a second, and also a preferred functional way. So the initial look back in November, uh, that should be two thousand nineteen, not two thousand fourteen calc's. Um, assumed a class, so what's changed is we've, we have, and here, changed the class size assumption from twenty-four, which was at that time the the weighted average of our policy max. As you know, we have a maximum class size in kindergarten and first, maximum class size and and two and three and four and five. And the weighted average of those maximums were twenty-four. But what we've realized since is we never really have perfect uh utilization of the classrooms in that fashion. What we have is an actual average, which is twenty-two point one eight over the years. Over the last five years, our actual class size average K to five is twenty-two point one eight. So that's a more realistic number to use. So we've used that in the two new ones. And then, as I, as I said, the compromise current is is a look at how many students we can actually just fit in the building if all of the large classrooms were used as a homeroom. And I'll get to the classrooms in a second. And everything else we need, small group instructions room for speech or this or that, everything, can just be somehow made do with the small group rooms, instruction rooms that exist. In some schools, that's a more realistic assumption than in others. But in any event, that's the compromise current, really like the maximum we can put in there. And then the preferred functional is to look at maybe we need a few more small group instruction spaces in some of the schools. Maybe we need to, in other words, use one of those large, one or more of the large classrooms, divide it and create more small group instruction spaces, know that was those SGI's. Also, there are common area considerations in some of the schools that that might might limit the capacity in some fashion. So you see, we started from twenty-five twenty on November, and there was a sense, ours included, that that was too high by school here. Down to this one, which is, yeah, what can we do now? And you'll note here the Stony Creek is actually already above their their their, well, we'll show it in a second, but just remember the number five-ten. And then the preferred functional, which is not something that we can get to without construction and renovation. But so we have some numbers there. On the right side, we have, and we, this is not unchanged since November. We have three current looks, projections, ten years out. Our own internal one, which is simply using an an average of the the last five years of kindergarten. We have hired a co- a firm called Decision Insight to give us two looks, the conservative look, their words, moderate, their words. And then we've also engaged the Montgomery County Planning Commission. That, wait, that's the name of the, the, okay. So the Planning Commission uh offers this feature. They they're backed up. They have a lot of demand for this, but they'll give us another look. And for the purposes of tonight, we're going with the DI conservative number. It's the midpoint. There's no reason to choose moderate versus internal versus Monco. Maybe Monco will give us a little more insight into into what that should look like. Okay, so I went over those definitions. This is a look at the full-size classroom. Not gonna go too much time, but in each building, we went room by room and simply counted the number of large classrooms. Now, in each building, our approach is to reserve one for art and music, one each. So in Blue Bell's example, we have twenty-six total full-size classrooms, minus two for art and music. In that school, we don't have any room, we don't have the autistic support program, so zero. And then we also, in that school, we happen to have the emotional support program, so we need two of those full-size classrooms for emotional support. So the net of all that is twenty-two. And and so forth for the other, their schools. And you'll note that for Stony Creek, we currently have a modular unit and and that count of to- full-size classrooms does not include the temporary modular unit. Okay, now here are a few other capacity considerations.
Jim, just just to back up a little, I just want to make sure I understand um the relationship of some of these numbers. If I, that previous um table that you were looking at, um, when you're trying to get to net, net classroom size, Blue Bell, for example, uh, making those adjustments, you go, you end up with twenty-two uh full-size classrooms net. And if you multiply that by the twenty-two point one eight average students per class, that gets you to, that's four hundred eighty-eight, which matches the compromised current number for Blue Bell in your first table.
You're getting a little ahead of us, but yes, but it will. You'll see how that matches up and um, but that is exactly how the compromised current works. You take the right-hand column and multiply by twenty-two point one eight.
Okay.
Okay, so here are these other capacity and and we're getting away from the uh uh quantitative side of this and into more of the qualitative, a little more of the art feature. So we have, the architects have a lot of experience with this. We've identified five areas that any typical K to five school uh has, and you would want to look at in terms of what their effect is on capacity. Left-hand column is a small group instruction spaces. We mentioned that, so it's very hard to count up, for example, in Blue Bell, just how many of those there are. I can, we can tell you how many are in use for things now, but does that office over there that's kind of small, where the guidance counselor meets with kids? Uh, does that really count or not? Then we're getting into a little bit of of artwork here. However, when you, you really should consider the amount of appropriate SGI space when you, when you start thinking about how many students realistically can be in a building. Same goes for the gym. What I've done here for the gym is we just, the the figure, square footage is the actual square footage of each of those gyms. And then in the blue below, the footnote is there's no square foot per student industry standard or guideline, but generally speaking, the architects report that for a cal- an elementary school, you'd want between eighteen hundred and three thousand square feet. So ours are either exceeding that or in that that range. So the gyms don't tend, don't appear to be a limiting factor. Library, there is an industry standard of three and a half square foot per student, so we measured the the square footage of library and converted that to how many students each can support. As you can see, libraries don't really seem to limit things either. Now we're getting to somewhere, the cafeteria, where the same thing, there is an industry standard there. We're convoluted. It's ten square feet per student. It's called per serving session, which is basically per lunch. So we have three lunches, so you cook all those numbers. And you see that the cafeterias have a suggest, like Lower Gwinnett, we can pack a whole bunch more students in Lower Gwinnett. Are we gonna do that? No, of course not. But that that cafeteria is obviously not a limiting factor in that example. The right-hand column is interesting, one I I actually hadn't thought about until we discussed this in November. The kitchen and serving areas, and and there is a standard for that, according to our architects, three square foot per student. And when you calculate the square footage of those areas and then use three, now you see, start to see some limitations. And that manifests itself, not, we don't really cook that many hot meals anymore like you used to in schools, you a little bit, but it's serving areas. Ah, now we're getting to some, some um log jams, especially uh we're perceiving it at Stony where that says five hundred twenty-seven, and that might, and and at Blue Bell, the number's four seventeen. How how fast kids can get to the serving line, how much room there is to have another cashier or not, that's a, that's a factor. So I'd really rather consider this one serving area rather than kitchen, because I don't think kitchen really applies to too much anymore, but that one does in in terms of how much room is there? Or does it feel like? So.
Jim, going back, scroll, scroll back up a little bit.
Okay.
Um, when you're looking at the kitchen slash serving area, um, you have Blue Bell's kitchen and Stony Creek's kitchen in red font, that the serving capacity of them is below the enrollment, current enrollment of the buildings.
Uh, it was either that or just something for us to 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 think about. In all of these areas, the SGI one is to think about, and then the serving area. I mean, it just seems like those numbers are getting closer to, if not below, um, actual enrollments.
Um, so the current enrollment of Blue Bell, for example, is four thirty-seven. And if the kitchen serving area is four hundred seventeen, then it's a, a little bit tight, right? Um, likewise with Stony Creek, five hundred forty-four students currently, and the serving area number five twenty-seven, a little bit tight. But also Shady Grove's, Shady Grove's current enrollment is six hundred twenty-three. So by that same logic, wouldn't you like denote Shady Grove's kitchen serving area as red as well?
Good, yeah. I mean, I I don't ever envision us frankly, uh, making any just capacity decisions or or rezoning or renovation based on on serving areas. It's really more up there just because the architects pointed out, so it it could be, yeah.
Yeah, and and in reality, I mean, the amount of students above this kitchen serving area metric is isn't really that big of a difference.
Right, and you, it's actually, it's it's instrumental to note that Lower Gwinnett is our newest of the schools. And you'll note that their common areas are the most accommodating. That's because as as construction evolved over the decades, um, the standard was to just build common areas bigger in general. Okay, so this page will put one on at a time, uh, to use the entire landscape of the screen. This now takes a look at the compromise current approach. Remember, that's the one that just counts the number of big classrooms that are available after we net out the ones for music and art and stuff. And then multiply it by twenty-two point one eight. And so that first column in green there is the capacities of each of the schools. And and you can see, we, if we use that approach, we can get two thousand three hundred twenty-nine students. All things fell perfectly. So the, in the blue is the actual enrollment this year. And then the percentage of capacity is a key calculation. As its name suggests, you just figure out how many you have now and and what uh percentage of what you could have in there. And you'll see that, that's where Stony is over a hundred percent. Which is exactly why we needed the modular to create more homeroom space. We, we converted the music room at Stony to a homeroom to accommodate the more students. That's not a long-term solution. It was a, it was a stopgap measure, and the other schools are uh are are pretty close as well.
Jim, quick question for you. So in calculating the percentage of capacity for Stony at a hundred and nine, that's not including the modulators. Is that correct?
Stony's um one oh six does not, correct. So we we shaved that off by creating a homeroom.
Do you have a sense about what it comes to after factoring in the modulators?
You would take away, uh, or you'd, you'd add twenty-two point one eight to the five-ten. So it would be like a hundred point two, oh two or something.
The modules only gave us one extra classroom?
Yeah, one uh home, one large-sized classroom. It gave us a, a uh small group instruction for um instrumental.
So even with the modulators, Stony's at a hundred percent?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And that's this year. So the next uh line over, or two lines, are projected for next year. First public display of these numbers. I don't want to get crazy about these numbers. They are very tentative because we don't have any kindergarten registration yet, and this whole game depends on kindergarten registration, which happens uh later this month and in February. I've said that. We had to come up with something for the budget, and here's what we thought. We used, by the way, the DI conservative numbers. In the past few years of budget, we've used our own internal ones, which are a little lower, and we, so we use the midpoint ones. Divided them up as best we can amongst the schools, which is a little bit of an art, not a science. And you'll see what we're projecting for next year. A few things jumped to mind right away. Stony's crowded, went from one oh six to one oh nine. And we'll need to house in some fashion forty-eight students there, unless the next few months of conversations yield some other arrangement. Is that for putting it nicely? And then the last column is not divvied up by school because that would be very unreliable, but total. That total is twenty-three forty-five, which is what the uh DI conservative number is, and you can see that, sorry, going all the way to the end, the whole district will be over capacity in ten years if the DI conservative numbers pan out. So we move on.
Jim.
The other way.
Go ahead, please. Jim, um, in pre- previously, we had talked about how further out you get projection, the the greater the vari- variability and less certain it could be. Um, I think also in addition to looking at the ten-year-out picture, again, because I think variation increases, also looking at it five years out, I think is a safer midpoint. Um, getting that as a column in here would be helpful as well.
Yep, yes, we can, we can certainly add five years out. Now, that would again be just a total, not that by school.
Sure, that's fine.
It's fine.
Um, but one thing that that jumps out at me is that um projected twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty enrollment across all our K five buildings, uh, twenty-two seventy bears to, it's actually a little bit below the total capacity across all of our building. Right, so all, what that means is that although there is crowding and over, there, they're overcapacity at Stony Creek, exceptionally, if you rebalance kids across the building, it within the available space that's currently.
Correct. Right, when, and and again, that's gonna be a, uh, one of the main topics for the conversation in the next few months is options for both short-term, which would be a rebalancing, if you will, and long-term, which is gonna be creating capacity. Okay, so now the preferred functional uh approach to capacity, which as you recall, maybe taking a couple of those large rooms and converting them to SGI's and maybe doing some things with uh or accounting for common areas. Um, if we look at, if we use that as a goal, like a long-term goal, we could, the first column shows us we could have uh twenty, two thousand eighty-six students. So same, same uh uh exercise, measured up against what we have this year, you can see, everybody's over. And you kind of know that when you go into the schools. You visit the schools and you see small group instruction room. So for example, sometimes they're dovetailed, and and speech has the morning and every other Thursday, and maybe ESL or or English Language Learners have it Thursday afternoons, and they can use that same space. That's, that's good building scheduling. And the principals uh are very good, I'd say, creative slash genius at how they do their scheduling because you don't have a choice. This is giving them a choice. This would be changing things so that that number of spaces more accurately reflect our expectations for things. Again, next year, same enrollment projections uh using DI conservative, but now we have different capacities, again, because we're in the world of preferred functional. And everybody's way over one year, this next year. And then again, without the five-year, we can easily inject that, but ten years out, the whole district is well over. If, remember, so now we we have to decide, well, does the DI conservative projections come true? Would it be, are are they underselling it? If if last year's kindergarten experience is any uh history, they're underselling it. But maybe that was an anomaly, in which case maybe actually even the the district's uh approach is better. Hard to, we don't want to make knee-jerk reactions. On the other hand, here are the numbers. And then the last thing that we have uh in terms of numbers is a look at the the possible, and so it sort of gets out of, I was just saying, remember, the DI conservative is the middle one, that's what we have. What if our internal approach, which is the, is really the most conservative, pans out? Well, at the end, even, you know, you can see the range of possibilities. If the DI moderate is the one that happens, if we get all these kids, like more kindergarten classes like we had this this existing year, if we, if we just did those same calculations for that, the bottom right-hand cell shows we're a hundred and twenty-six percent of capacity. That's crazy. We can't say that's zero chance, but that's not as likely as probably the DI conservative. But it's important when you do this sort of thing to look at the range of the possible outcomes. Questions on the numbers before I go to the dates?
That crystal clear for everyone?
They're so, they're so awesome that everybody, okay. Okay, well, the next part of this actually gets at, okay, so what are we gonna do with all this? We we have some capacity, look. We, we have some capacity looks, we have some ideas about, uh, what could be enrollment projections, uh, how you might calculate capacity, whatever. So how are we going to deal with this? This is a schedule of meetings, uh, and we're not going to go through everyone, but I want to just a, assure you that we have a plan for talking about this. And we want to make sure that anybody who in their right mind wants to be part of this can, um, join us. And it's, this will all be advertised, it'll, it'll be, uh, on the website, we'll have copies of this for everybody here. We have board meetings, which are in black, which is tonight kicking this thing off. Share this list, present the updated capacity calc, which I just did. Define the problem, which we have done, and then the range of options, which we'll talk about over these next few months is, uh, including the rebalancing, as noted. We have to give serious thought to adding, creating capacity, be it renovating existing footprint or adding footprint. And of course, those things have a direct correlation to, or, or interaction with the budget. The next meeting, uh, as we noted earlier, is in the audio on. A facilities committee, meeting number one, we'll have three of those. And that's where we start looking at, you know, so what are some of our ideas? Architect to be present and what could we do? We have, we are cooking up some ideas about rebalancing and, and we have a good software program that will show the effect of this idea or that. And so we'll take a look at short-term options and, and not make any decisions, just, just throw some ideas out. Next board meeting here, we'll, um, just update the public on that. Number eleventh is the second of three committee, facilities committee meetings, same topic, audio on. Uh, we'll, we'll actually have some alternatives for attendance boundary maps. Uh, we'll have a draft list of recommendations, no actions being taken, no decisions are being made. Update again in this forum on twenty-fifth. March eleventh is the third of the three facilities committee meetings, again in the audio on. And we'll finalize a list of other recommendations and as well as attendance battery maps. And then we take our show on the road. The red meetings, four in total, one at each elementary school. We'll have effectively the same presentation, but it will be an opportunity for, for parents and guardians at that school to ask more school-specific questions if they have any. But at first, those two are that week and then March twenty-fifth board meeting, again, keeping people updated. Those are the, the second of, or third and fourth of the four community meetings. We have a board meeting on April twenty-ninth. Board meeting on May sixth, more public commentary. On May twenty-eighth, there will be the review of any action needed. And then the plan is June third for the board to take any action. And then a green isn't to be minimized, June and August, we're going to take all the steps to implement these things. So it's not like we have given ourselves excessive amount of time. And, and it seems like we have, like, but I'm here to tell you, June will be here before we know it. And, and we have the ongoing budget conversations, which do take a lot of time as they should. And they're, they're definitely related to any decisions we make about increasing capacity in some fashion. So as I said, we'll get all this out publicly, it'll be on the website, we'll share it, social media, wherever, however we can. And we would encourage anybody who's interested to attend.
Jim, um, so pretty quickly, you and the team are going to be, um, looking at some alternative tenants' boundary maps? Because I think it's clear from, from the numbers that we're looking at is that, at least in the short term, what we're looking at doing is, is rebalancing students across our buildings, uh, which is going to be redrawing tenants' boundaries for the school. And as you guys are coming up with different scenarios or different maps for that, um, how can parents provide input or feedback on the proposed maps that, um, patient is, uh, considering or exploring?
Currently, we've only, I mean, we would take email questions, it, we will keep track of questions asked at the various meetings. Um, open to other ideas for ways to receive feedback. I prefer not in-person visits, but if that's an option for people, you're all welcome at this, anytime, it's okay. But we don't want to cut off any channels for sure, so we would take a digital form or verbal form at, in any meeting.
Um, my concern is that by the time we get to March and in April, where it's in essence kind of like a roadshow of recommendations, which would, I guess, would be a recommendation on what the attendance boundaries are going to look like. Um, at that point, we're more like in sell mode of what the solution is as opposed to, um, getting feedback from the parents and families who are actually affected, crafting.
Well, each, I see what you're saying, each of the community meetings there has that third sub-bullet of solicit feedback, so we wouldn't necessarily be presenting the, the one and final version, but unless we're going to have another round of community meetings for the final version, then our, our thought was the final version, once we do all of these community meetings, would be in these four board meetings, which maybe we have a different, uh, venue if we feel like there's, there's enough interest or maybe people will have been feedbacked out by that point. But we can, we can run afly with that one.
But in, in terms of, I mean, we're going to, I guess, determine numbers, how many students would need to be moved from point A to point B before we would be draw, drawing maps? And so I would imagine that some ways going into too much detail too early would also be very limiting.
One of the, and that's a good point. At the next facilities committee meeting, number one, on January twenty-second, that first sub-bullet talks about guiding principles for developing the new attendance boundaries. I think we will talk about that, we won't have, hey, twenty kids are going from here to there, but what are we trying to do? I can tell you the thing right now, we're trying to keep siblings together as best we can. Okay, that's just, that always happens, you always try to do as best you can. We try to minimize the cost of transportation, things like that. So, um, we'll, we'll spell that out, we won't have any answers, we won't have any options, but we want to get to the, what are, what, what are we? Once John and, and Gary worked their software magic, we want to tell them like, hey, try this or please minimize that.
Um, so Jim, I led a redistricting effort, um, about five or six years ago. One of the things we did to get some feedback from the community, but now we make it overwhelming, was in the early stages, when we came up with, uh, guiding principles for goals of the redistricting or the tenants' boundary process, we formed, uh, like an advisory, advisory, uh, ended up being, I think, about ten people from the different elementary schools that were going to be affected by the, by the new attendance boundaries. And they served as kind of like a focus group for us, um, as we came up with different scenarios and different maps to consider and. So use them as a sounding board. By the time that we came up, settled on, um, to best option. Uh, we knew we had some backing support from parents who were actually affected, um, from the new maps. And when we went to, when we went to the school, it wasn't just the administration, um, pitching or explaining why this fence, but we also had, um, parents who could actually speak directly about how we ended up where we are. But that's something maybe to think about to now and by the time we get to March and.
And just so we know, the last time, um, when Madison was closed and, um, we did the redistricting, there was a focus group put in place then that consisted of some parents, um, principals. I'm not sure who else was on it, but again, it was not an overwhelming number. It was probably around ten or fifteen, uh, people that were put together in the focus group um, to help guide and think of things that maybe the administration might not think of. You know, the parents are there, they know that, you know, certain, I don't know, certain families might be going here after school or here after, or whatever, whatever the problems might be of changing from one school to another. Um, but they did have, and I'm not saying it was done the last time. Um, I'm just saying that there was a focus put in place at that time also.
So there were representatives from each of the elementary schools, including Madison? Okay.
My, my, uh, only request on that would be that we make it very clear about the expectations for what that, that group's role is. If that group is going to be just decision-making group, then that's one thing. If there could be a, an, another forum for feedback, that's good, another thing too. But I don't want the people who get tabbed for that, first of all, I'd like to, we have to figure out how to pick people. A, and B, uh, I'd want them all to be very, very clear as to, to what they could expect.
Yeah, and I think, um, as I, I refer to it as an advisory, it's strictly advisory. And again, the data, it's us here at the board table, they need to make the final decision on what the map's going to look like. But, um, to Tracy's point, um, folks at the administrative building, people crunching the numbers, using decision insight and all that, they'll have one view and they'll have data and evidence, but they don't live in the, so get a different perspective from parents and families that actually live in these neighborhoods and the geography that we're looking.
We're certainly looking for that at the community meetings, but maybe we'll have a subset of some fashion.
The issue is that by the time you get to the community meetings, oftentimes it's kind of like, there will be to some degree vested in the recommendation that you're putting out there and it's not like completely wide open at that point.
How, how, but if I could just in, interrupt, I mean, I think part of our role though as a board and part of what people have elected us to do is also to represent, you know, among all of us, we all are in different areas of the district. And we too are representatives of, you know, families that live in the district and who have, myself as an Ambler-Brower resident, I, you know, I think I could bring some of those, you know, thoughts as well as people who live in Lower Gwinnett. So I think that is also some of our roles, our just.
Maybe this point here, in February eleventh, uh, where we start discussing pros and cons, maybe, maybe that's an opportunity to have some additional, this would be in February, so it'd be before the community meetings. And, and while at the facilities committee meeting, anyone's welcome to come up and say what would be a pro and a con, we could have a smaller selective or something group to discuss pros and cons. That would, that would get it done before the commi, community meetings.
Yeah, a question, uh, you have this piloted out approximately ten years. Oh, gut feeling, uh, how many classrooms do you think will be short in five years?
Sorry. Hello?
Yeah, in other words, we have no idea.
No, it, it would be impossible to say we know for sure. Um, I, I can say that I do believe that rebalancing will, will help us, will be necessary in the very short run. And, but I also, I'm pretty confident we're going to conclude we need more footprint, more capacity created by more footprint in some fashion. I don't know what, know what that looks like now, but just looking at where we're going with this, I can kind of get that feel, my gut feel.
More footprint is code for a new construction.
Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
And that is informational item. We also will have five voting items. Um, I don't believe there's any changes from, uh, last meeting. It's the replacement of a maintenance vehicle, parking lot lighting. Something that the student body was interested in was the gymnasium speakers, roofing at Shady Grove and a acceptance of a Goggle Court township. So those will all be up for a voting, voting session. That is all for facilities right now.
Okay, thanks Tracy. Finance committee, David, uh, anything since last week?
Uh, nothing's changed since last week. We have five, um, informational items and five, um, items to vote for. Uh, Wade, would you like to summarize again what number one is?
Uh, thank you. Um, the first is, um, allowing us to advertise and display the nineteen-twenty, uh, proposed preliminary budget, including, uh, the act one plus exceptions. The second is, we, we actually did discuss this, the increase of the titanium security services, uh, timeframe at the high school by thirty minutes. A we-off donation of two items, the financial reports and the list of payments. Thank you.
And can I just ask that we pull out F-five, vote on that separately?
Yes. Okay, um, policy, Carol, anything to add since last week?
No, nothing, we, um, are looking to vote the, for approval of the, um, policy eight oh-three, the school calendar, and that is not the school calendar. It's the policy of that delegates the authority to the administration.
Right. Okay, uh, board of the personnel director, Kathy, anything different since last week?
Any items that are, uh, changed, added are bolded on K-one, otherwise no changes.
You, uh, report of board representatives, we touched on these last week, anything to add from anyone? Nope, so, uh, now it's time to vote. And we're going to vote for fifteen A-one, uh, as its own individual item. So, um.
Excuse me, can you clarify, uh, uh, which, uh, which starting date we're doing for, uh, September, uh, twenty nineteen?
The, the item of approval and what's been recommended by the administration is a school calendar that has first day of school starting the week before Labor Day, August twenty-sixth. I'll ask, uh, Jeff, give us some guidance on.
You have two options. Uh, option number one is to vote on the recommendation as presented. And obviously, if there are five votes to carry it, then it's approved and there's no need for a motion to amend. Alternatively, you can try to amend the motion to a post-Labor Day start. And you would need to have a majority of the board to do that, so you'll have to decide which route you want to take.
Okay, Deb, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, ask Jeff whether or not we could just do one followed by the other. So in other words, we would first see whether or not, uh, we have enough people who want to move forward with the existing proposed schedule and if not, then go to, then we do it that way.
We can certainly do that. Uh, obviously, if there are five votes to pass it, then it's done and there would be no need for a second motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, can I have a motion for approval of item fifteen B-one as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, the motion has been approved and seconded. Um, should we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Badger?
Four.
Mrs. David?
Voting for.
Mrs. D. Pietro?
I'm voting for.
Mr. Frank?
Yes, voting for.
Ms. Greenstein?
Voting against.
Mr. Stoloff?
Against.
Mrs. Walsh?
Against.
Mr. Antonio?
Against.
War four.
Wow, we have a tie, okay. Uh, that's right, Ronny's not here. Yep. So now, um, one motion, I guess? Tracy?
Um, yes, I'd like to make an emotion to amend the calendar to, um, for the nineteen-twenty school year start.
Twenty-nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah, what did I say?
Nineteen-twenty.
Well, the twenty-nineteen, the twenty-twenty calendar, um, to start after Labor Day.
So Tuesday, September third.
Yes.
Is, and I take it rationale is what we've discussed before, which is that there is, when we queried the public, there was certainly, uh, mixed interest and in terms of representing the interests of the public.
But first, before we get into rationale, we need a second to the motion.
I, I apologize, Jeff.
Second. Uh, motion has been approved and seconded. Um, your roll call? Oh, comments, any comments?
I was just asking Ms. Walsh for her clarification of rationale.
Sure. So the start date would be moved four school days later. I assume that the motion has no change to anything, any recesses or anything? And the end date would be Thursday, June eighteenth, just four days later. Is that correct?
That's, that's an excellent question because the question is whether the administration, as the result of that change, would need to reconfigure the calendar to reflect those modifications. My suggestion would be, instead of making that decision off tough evening, that if this motion were, the motion as presented should be direct the administration to develop a calendar consistent with a after Labor Day start. And give the discretion to the administration to revise the calendar accordingly. And if the individual. And if the individual who made the motion in the second would agree to that modification, that would be in order.
I agree. Okay, with that, more discussion, or should we do a roll call?
Does the administration have a position, point on how that might affect, or if you're in favor or not?
Uh, yes. Administration does have a, a pretty strong, uh, preference for starting before Labor Day. I, and the other reason I asked that question, though, is because June 18th is a Thursday, and so that presumes we have two and only two snow days. If we have more, if we have four, we'd be into June 22nd, Monday. I don't, I'm not really seeing in this calendar any days to capture within the school year. I mean, I, I don't like the idea of going Monday, December 23rd, for example, you know, only to have one day of school, that's a, that's, and there, we don't do a whole lot of other recesses to take days away from. Every, I know, I'm pretty sure the community's preference is a full week for spring recess. We wouldn't take any of that. This is, this is the reason why we, and for all the educational reasons, but I won't go into right now, I, I also would, I don't know, I, I think we can just say 18th now, but I'm happy to go back and take another look at the calendar, but I'm looking at it right now, there's nothing, no place to go.
And, I mean, if we look at the following year's calendar, the one that starts, um, August 31st, the last day of school is the 6th of June. So this is changing that to, this one would be the 18th of June, which is two days later, and if you don't have snow days, then it would be the 16th, which would be exactly the same as the following year. And, you know, for me, honestly, this doesn't make a difference to me and my child, because most likely he will be doing August practices for sport anyway. I'm just going by the survey that we put out for the parents. We had numerous parents, especially elementary level kids, who were more interested in having the leeway, actually, they were more interested in starting all the time after Labor Day, which, you know, I can see a problem with that, but when Labor Day is so early, um, that's why I'm bringing this forth, because of the survey that we received from the parents stating that they would like to see us have some more leeway and maybe not always start before Labor Day.
Do we know if that survey was, was, was done scientifically and it captured a cross section of the entire student population and all families? I had the impression from some of our, uh, student representatives that, um, some families voted multiple times on this and, and had multiple answers to the, uh, survey. I'm, I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, but I'd just like to know...
There were no hanging chads, are we asking? However, yeah, there was, we, we did, it was online, and so I, I don't know if we could, if somebody wanted to go on a different computer.
Mr. Badger asked the administration, I'm just gonna also voice a second, uh, for the, uh, before, um, uh, option, and in, in general, this is somewhat technical, but um, by opening before, uh, transportation starts a week early for our school as opposed to all the non-pubs, and frankly, what that allows me to do is to have additional bus, um, drivers throughout the district, uh, ready to fix all the things that happen in the, uh, bad, bad wave, missed stops and other things, um, throughout the district on the first few days of school. Frankly, our openings, um, have been substantially, uh, better than many of the districts around because of the before, um, option. If we were to open after, uh, we would be opening the same day as GA, Germantana, um, LaSalle, and all the other schools, and frankly, I only have one bus per every single bus, um, uh, need that occurs. So I don't have any, uh, extra options to cover any of the problems that are likely gonna occur, and it frankly would mean that, uh, the first, uh, week of school for everybody would, uh, be, um, more challenging, frankly, later, uh, with more difficulties. It's not the end of the world, but you asked for other administrative, uh, reasons, and frankly, um, as the person who oversees the transportation department, this is much favorable to me than change.
And I, I did want to bring up one other thing. Um, about six years ago, right before I was elected onto the school board, that is how the school calendars were done every year. If Labor Day was early, you started after Labor Day. If Labor Day was late, you started before Labor Day. So this is not something that is new to the school district, it's just something that would be new in the, the past five or six years.
If I could also add, I mean, I, it, over 35 years, I worked in districts that only started, uh, in the last 15 at least, it only started before Labor Day. And again, I personally don't have an investment in whether it starts before or after Labor Day, I just do think in deference to, uh, asking the community for feedback and then not paying attention to that feedback, um, inappropriate, I think, on our part, finding a middle ground, uh, and hopefully a compromise.
All right, any other comments? Can we have a roll call? Kirkosh?
Mr. Badger?
Will we restate the motion?
So the motion is, in essence, to, uh, direct the administration to put together a school calendar where the first day of school would start the day after Labor Day for 2019, 2020 school year.
Mr. Badger?
I vote against.
Mrs. David?
I vote against.
Mrs. Di Pietro?
I vote against.
Mr. Frank?
No.
Ms. Greenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stoloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Antonio?
Yes.
Four, four.
All right, so I guess it's back... Guess we'll bring it back next time, our next meeting, uh, the 20, meeting on the 28th.
Could I just ask one question? Do we know how the teachers feel about the calendar?
Yeah, in, in preparation for next meeting, I will dig out, out those numbers, summarize.
Thank you.
I should note, for the record, I will not be in attendance on the 28th, so you'll still have eight votes if Ms. Hayman is present.
The 28th will be a, a work session, so we'll review the, the items up for vote, but the week after, which is what, February 4th, will actually vote, will you be? But then Pat won't be, okay? All right? So, uh, it'll be interesting on, uh, the next set of meetings. But I guess that's democracy in action. Okay, moving on then to the other items on the agenda.
Uh, excuse me, so we're not gonna vote on, uh, on, uh, 2021, correct?
We will, but I'm going to vote on them in bulk with the majority of the, the other items, with the exception of 15I5, which is the list of payments. Okay? So, uh, with that being said, can I have a motion to approve items 15B2 through 15K5, with the exception of 15I5, which is the list of...
So moved.
Motion has been, uh, moved and seconded. Comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion's pass. And now can I have a motion to approve item 15I5 payments?
So moved.
Okay.
Uh, motion has been approved and seconded. Any comments?
Yes, I'd like to abstain from this vote due to my, um, employment with one of the vendors, I will submit my abstention in writing.
So noted. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so now we're at the second public comment period, which can be on any school-related topic, and we have one speaker registered, it's Christine De Laurentis.
Christine De Laurentis, Ambler. Um, I viewed the information about the increasing enrollment with, um, great interest, although I no longer have a horse in this race, but, um, I would like to point out that today's kindergarteners and first graders are tomorrow's seventh graders and 10th graders. Are we looking as part of this plan at the capacity of the middle school and the capacity of the high school, because we know what they're gonna look like in seven years? When those kindergarteners hit sixth grade in six years? So what are we looking at for that, in making sure that we can accommodate those, those kids? We, we cannot predict 10 years from now what the middle school's gonna look like, but we can predict six years from now, because we know what our kindergarteners, what those numbers are. Um, and I'd like to see a plan for middle school and high school, and how that's gonna be adapted to adopt, uh, to accommodate this influx of children as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, two more speakers, and the next one is Jonathan Calpas.
Hi, Jonathan Calpas, 100 Hillcrest Lane, Ambler, PA. Thank you for, uh, having me speak. I just had a question, a couple questions, uh, the survey about starting school after Labor Day. I know you don't want to get involved with the dialogue tonight, but I did respond to that survey. I have pretty strong feelings about starting before, before, uh, starting after. I have, I work, my wife works, um, it's very, very hard to find childcare as you get, um, later into August, and I suspect early September is equally, if not more, challenging. Typically, um, a lot of this stuff is staffed by high school kids, is staffed by, uh, college students, and, um, as you get deeper into the summer, they're just not there. So, um, kind of curious as to where people who need childcare go, um, in a low-income earning household. And as far as the survey goes, do we know how many responses that were received? I think it was done via Survey Monkey or something like that, so I'd be curious to know how many people responded, and to Mr. Frank's point, um, was this survey anonymous? I don't remember if I put a name in there or not, but if we had people voting multiple times, doesn't seem to be, um, you know, to, to both your points about, you know, a public vote or public input, um, I feel like you should kind of get one vote in that situation. So I'd be curious, and I have my email on there, if somebody wants to follow up, that would be great. And then I had another question was on the, uh, proposed redistricting. I'd like to know how many people on the board have elementary-aged children? You don't need to answer now, but I'd kind of be curious. I'd also like to know, I, I think I've figured out that it was, uh, the, the administration that put together the timeline, but I would like, based on all the questions from the board, but I would kind of like to know, um, who put that together, because it seems like we have a, have a funnel, we start out with options and discourse, and there's really one option left at the end of the day, which is removing kids around, um, which, and look, I mean, I, I looked at the numbers, and I know this is kind of early, um, in the game for this, but, um, when you look at next year, um, it doesn't seem like, I mean, there, there is a, a short-term need, certainly, but is the need immediate, that we need to rush? Really, we're in January, you know, these decisions are gonna be made in three to four months, or August, it seems kind of, um, a bit rushed, at least from my perspective. But I'd like to kind of know, um, if there's any flexibility with that, if we can have, perhaps push that out a little bit to get the right answer, and I didn't live in the district, I've been here for about five years, I didn't live here when Madison Avenue was closed, but, um, you know, the former speaker's point, you have that kind of looking long-term and not just short-term in some of these solutions, um, and I feel like redistricting, people are always gonna come and people are gonna go, so that's not always a long-term solution. But that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Um, as stated in the agenda documents, it's not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers, um, but follow-up responses will be posted on the district's website when appropriate. And our final speaker for tonight is Carmina Taylor.
Joe, I want to give you, um, this piece of paper now. I really felt disrespected, um, at the last meeting when you cut me off for three minutes. So what I did, Joe, is I put a Facebook...
Ms. Taylor, before you, before you begin, it's clearly stated in the, the agenda that instructions for speakers are to try to limit their comments to three minutes?
Right. Um, so what I did is I reached out to my classmates on Facebook and asked them if I could speak on their behalf beyond three minutes. I received 78 responses, I'm not gonna use three minutes for each, but I know it's been a practice in the past, that if you had more than one speaker on a particular topic, it was given to that group. So I'm not gonna go on for all of those minutes, but I would like, um, and that's evidence that I have support from my classmates to speak a little bit beyond three minutes.
You're the only speaker registered to speak, and it's three minutes per speaker.
Joe, I'm gonna read the email that I sent to you guys last week, it may go over three minutes, and I hope that you don't interrupt me.
You'll have three minutes, Carmina.
All right. So last week I came because I was under the impression that you guys were aware that I was supposed to be here, so I'm just gonna read you in the spirit of transparency what was in the email and just ask where we move from here. So I said, "Dear board members, I've attached an overview of our reunion weekend. Our theme for the three-day event is celebrating the milestones of our life. I believe the overview will give you a comprehensive assessment of our plans and how we, as a planning committee, are seeking to make this reunion a meaningful and memorable event for all of my classmates that live nearby and far away. I'm seeking your approval to have our Friday night event in the Square Gym. Once we place our deposit with our company, Neon Entertainment, out of New York City, we will enter a contractual agreement for the services. The second and third attachment is sample language in the contract that will remove any liability on them for anything we do during this service provision. They will also be providing us a, a certificate of insurance that should cover us from suing you, as well as anything else. One of my classmates, who's a Pennsylvania lawyer, indicated that because this reunion is not a district event, then my classmates cannot hold you accountable for any injuries. Therefore, given all the precautions, I truly believe any threats to hold the district accountable are removed." When we were in high school, most of our indoor gym classes were in the Square Gym, therefore, to have an activity there, bringing back our skating days, since our local skating rink has been, been, been replaced by the library on Skip Back Pike, would not only be incredibly nostalgic, but it's a premier adult event for the reunion. It's about the experience for all of us. I hope you will factor that in, uh, into your decision. I have worked very hard with Jerry's office to make sure that the provisions for the mobile skating rink can be adapted, as well as properly adhering to all protocol requirements under the facility usage requests processed. The second approval we're asking is related to the memorial statue that was presented to you in November. Ten years ago, I presented to the board a proposal to name the auditor after our beloved principal, Mr. Henry Vanuwa, Van De Water. That event was the commencement of our 20th reunion. At the time, one board member felt that a flood of requests of naming something after someone would come in, but to my understanding, that didn't happen. Therefore, this alumni request is something for so... Therefore, this alumni request is in line with the provisions of the Whistahicken Policy 918, and would be a great booster for other alumni classes. Additionally, we created a $500 scholarship and Mr. Van De Waters' name for that year for an unsung high school senior hero. Therefore, we have facilitated some of the feedback suggestions that you have offered to Wade after my last presentation."
Carmina, it's over three minutes, can you please wrap up?
We think this proposal honors unsung alumni that contributed to the school community back then and after. As the lead organizer for this reunion, I'm responsible to present a culmination of feedback and ideas that were given to us from across the spectrum of classmates. After... After our 20th reunion, we've tried to make each reunion inclusive to the diverse interests while being mindful of the expenses, since most of our classes, classmates live out of state. So basically, you guys received all of the attachments related to my approval. I gave you an overview of the reunion, a copy of the certificate of liability, which covers a million dollars. I've shown you examples of the indemnification clauses that would be in our contract, and I've asked you to consider the statue and working with Jerry's team to potentially find a location. So I'm here, I think this is the third time in three months to respectfully ask for a process to get those requests approved.
Thanks for your comments. I mean, again, we don't normally engage in dialogue, but since I know that you've been here multiple times, and this is a topic that's been, that's come up several times, so I'll make this comment, is that the administration is tasked with making decisions on facilities' use, rentals, and approvals. They approved several of requests that you put before them, but a few they did not, and we as a board support the administration's action.
So I have a, I have a facility request, and Wade, you know it, it's on the overview for Friday night. I have...
I mean, they approved several of the requests that you put before them, a few they did not, and we as a board don't typically get directly involved, that's expression of the administration, and myself, and I believe the majority of the board here, supports administration's decision on those requests.
So Wade, what next?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to have further conversations with Wade, you're free to do that, but as far as the board's concerned, the matter's closed.
All right.
Okay, moving on, any comments for my fellow board members?
Yes. I have two comments. The first is for, and I know we're not going back and forth, but just one of the comments that Mr. Calpas made was about, kind of like, our decision is already made, but it's not. We're talking about a redistrict. We have to see numbers, we have to see what administration's plans would be. There's, nothing has been, no decisions have been made yet. Nothing is finalized, you know, sit here and we look at numbers and we're like, well, maybe lean this way, or we'd lean that way, with depending on whatever the numbers are, but don't really have any of that. We haven't had any meetings, we haven't had any discussions. There is no decision made whatsoever right now. That's what all the meetings are for, that's what all this information is for, is so that we can make an informed decision further down the line and see what our choices are. I just put that out there. And I have one other thing that I wanted to talk about is for Whitpain residents, I know a lot of you have probably gotten yellow flyers, they were posted all over the township. There is a proposed soberhouse going into Whitpain Township. There's a board meeting, Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow, January 15th, 8:00 p.m. at the Center Square Fire Department, and then there's a zoning hearing Thursday, January 17th, at the Montgomery County Community College, Room 203 in the Science Center Theater. I ask anyone that has any interest in this to please attend both of these meetings, it's very important. If you are not in Whitpain, still might want to attend these meetings, because these things go from township to township, so just wanted to put that out there and let everybody know about the...
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.